Ready? We'll call the District 518 Board Meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. Recognition of visitors and guests, we all welcome all here this evening. 1.3 Pledge of Allegiance, will all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Public participation, I've received no request for public participation. 1.42 Recognition of students, staff, and community. Aaron will read the recognition items that we have.
Congratulations to Hallie Bullerman on placing first on the floor and second in the all-around competition at the gymnastics state tournament. Congratulations to the following Trojan gymnastics members that have been named to the Big Southwest Division All-Conference Team: Olivia Barber, Addison Gerber, Hallie Bullerman, and Brooklyn Dykstra. Congratulations to Kayden Van Briesen on being named to the Big South Conference Hockey All-Conference Honorable Mention Team for 2023-2024. Congratulations to the following Minnesota Business Professionals of America students who received state recognition. Kau Blay, second in Fundamental Desktop Publishing, and third in Administrative Support Team. Sophie Gohler, Alondra Leon Flores, and Christina Marias received third in administrative support team. This May, Kau Blay, Sophie Gohler, Alondra Leon Flores, and Christina Marias will compete at the 59th Annual National Leadership Conference in Chicago. Congratulations to the students that participated in the Region II AA Solo and Ensemble Contest. The choir took a total of 12 vocal entries and earned superior ratings for each. Sophomore Aiden Harwood earned a perfect score on his solo and received the Best In-Sight Honor. Quinn Benz, Bennett Oberloh, Ayana Leavon, Susanna Shway, Reagan Phelps, and Lucy O'Donnell received superior ratings in a vocal solo. And Adriano De Leon and Caitlin Hill received a superior rating in a vocal duet. Aiden Harwood, Sebastian Cron, Reagan Phelps, and Ayana Leavon received a superior rating in a vocal quartet. In addition, the orchestra received two superior ratings for violin solos from Ah Karat and Ayana Leavon, and a superior rating for a viola solo from Isabella Kuame. Ah Karat and Kaya Tu received a superior rating in a violin cello duet, and there were two additional entries for a violin solo by Mutawah and a string quintet of Ah Karat, Friendly Pa, Anna, Kaya Tu, and Susanna Shway that earned excellent ratings. Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations to all those who... Thank you, Aaron, for reading those. 2.0 Approval of Agendas, Consent Agenda and Main Agenda. We have a change in the Consent Agenda. 4.219, we need to change your resignation date to 8/9, August 9.
7.
I got 4.1219.
17, it's not carried. 17.
4.217, we'll change that effective date.
August 9.
To August 9. That's a change on the Consent Agenda. And the Main Agenda, we need to add 5.8 is the resolution that I'll have in front of you. We'll add, we'll make those two changes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and the Main Agenda.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Tom to approve the Consent and Main Agendas with the two changes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to approve the items on the Consent. Approval of Minutes is next.
I approve the Minutes of the February 20, 2024 School Board Meeting Minutes and to accept the Committee Meeting Minutes included in your packet.
Second. Motion by Lori, second by Matt to approve the Minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, the Consent Agenda. Move to, we need to approve the items on the Consent Agenda.
So moves, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Lori to approve the items on the Consent Agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, the Main Agenda. 5.1 is Dave from financial review.
I should have the revenues, excuse me, revenues and expenditures report through the end of February. So we're basically about two-thirds of the way through the year. We're running just under 62% on the revenues compared to about 60% this time last year, and our expenditures are just over 60% compared to almost 65% last year. So things are running pretty smoothly. There have been no unusual or extraordinary revenues or expenditures, and things are moving along pretty good.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Hearing done, we'll move on to 5.2, approve or declare surplus property. Dave?
We have, for this one is some percussion from the band that is no longer used. We do have some options of disposing of that, but we need to declare it surplus, and that's the request that went to the Operations Committee.
Okay.
I move to approve the banned items as surplus property.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Aaron to approve, declare various banned items as surplus property. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approved Resolution Improving Tax Abatement.
I move the approval of the tax abatement request.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Adam to approve the tax abatement for the property that we just talked about.
Who's the address again? So the subject property is located at 28095 Jones Avenue in Rushmore. Its legal description is Section 6 Township 101, Range 41, Lot 0, Block 0, in the northwest quarter acres of 155.2 acres. Parcel ID number is 120029000, and the hocknesses have provided all the required information for the tax abatement request. Operations Committee is recommending approval.
John, in your, just reading that, you said northwest, and in the paper it says northeast. I'm just assuming.
Excuse me, northeast, my fault.
Okay, just wanted to double check we had the right thing in the resolution.
Nope, my fault, I read it wrong.
I make the motion to approve, and we already have that, we just need to.
We already have, motion second.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal probably.
Ms. Gabri.
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schutte.
Aye.
Mr. France.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. 5.4 Approved Maintenance and Scheduling Agreement. This is Dave, has this.
This is a renewal of an agreement we've had with the city. I believe this is the third year, probably. Basically, they take over the ball fields at the middle school, all three of the ball fields, they maintain them. They take care of the striping, the scheduling of all the ball games goes through the city. They take over about this time every year and take care of it about the first of November. It's been a really good agreement for us. They've taken really good care of the fields. We split the cost of seed and fertilizer and that, and then this cost this year is $11,660, and it's a very good deal for us, and it's worked really well. So I believe Operations Committee reviewed this and recommending approval.
Okay, we need a motion.
So moves, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Adam to approve the Maintenance and Scheduling Agreement with the city with the baseball fields. This has been going on for several years?
About three.
About three now. Been working well.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, a question on the amount, how has that arrived at the $11,600?
The city, when we started, I think it was a $10,000 amount to cover their labor and time. It's a long period of time, actually, and there's two or three guys out there just about every day doing different stuff. And that was the original. It's gone up 10% each year, I believe.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5 Approved to Add a Section of Kindergarten for 24-25. Josh?
Yeah, this is a request from Prairie to add one kindergarten section. They're currently at 11, looking to go to 12 kinder sections. They're predicting 260-plus students, so the goal is to keep the number at 21, 22 on roster. So I think it was brought up by the Instructional Committee to recommend the approval of adding that section.
So do we need to hire a teacher and parents?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of another section of kindergarten for the next school year.
Second by Tom.
Motion by Lori, second by Tom to approve adding a section of kindergarten. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.6 Approved to Submit to Review and Comment for the High School Building Project.
So before you make the motion, I'll kind of run through. I did send out the review and comment this morning, so you did get a copy. There are a, please remember, this is a draft copy because there'll be a few adjustments that need to be made. Most of it's terminology or correcting sentences. Example, in the yellow section of that, Bullet Number 4 and 5 are, the language is being readjusted to address science labs into our classrooms as well as addressing the area where there are existing class, science classrooms. Likewise, another one that came up was on Page 4, under existing facilities. The community ed facility was left off of that, so it's minor changes. Most of it really won't have a huge bearing on the review and comments middle, and so we'd like to get that approved and laid out there. I did want to address the finance piece of the puzzle, which is in the review and comment. It would be for $15.3 million building bond, which would be an election that would be held on August 13. With that, then, the tax impacts are all listed there. Example, it's estimated for a $200,000 residential home. The tax increase would be $56.19, while on a half-million-dollar commercial, it'd be $287.47. And non, ag non homestead valuation of $13,000 would be $1.21 per acre. With that, then, there's also the $6 million facility maintenance bonds, and that has no impact for tax impact, I should say, for residential or commercial, but it does have a decrease on ag property. And I just, I mentioned the $13,000 valued ag land. It's a reduction of 77 cents per acre. So when you look at the net on this, residential and commercial, it doesn't have any change on that, but it does on ag property. So that $13,000 valuation property, it would be a 44 cent increase instead of what was projected there. So it's a little different on the ag property when we do a facility maintenance bond. The only thing, and I'll say it here, in 10 years, you need to do another $6 million facility maintenance bond to ensure through the life of the building bond that ag land gets that credit in the future years. And I realize that I won't be here at that point in time 10 years from now, and some of you won't be here, so it will be important to have that as an item that is remembered in the future. So just want to bring that because it is a big benefit to the ag property. And with that, then, there was a pie chart in there that breaks out, and it's just a quick view, but it talks about what portion of the ag property is paying the voter-approved bond, which is just over 14%. The residential is paying just under 23%. Commercial is paying just over 16%. And residential non-homestead is paying just under 9%. And the remainder, there's about 5% that's a remainder element. And ag to school credit is actually paying almost 33% of the bond. So nice little pie chart that breaks it out, easy to understand. So based on that and the review and comment, I would recommend approval of the review and comment.
So for most of these classrooms, is that all science? Is that kind of what I'm getting here?
Pardon me?
Like all these new classrooms, it's mainly a science wing? Is that kind of what we're shooting for?
That's what's drawn up there right now, yeah. But as the planning process goes and what we work through, that's what's budgeted for at this point. Not every room would be a fully, what I call lab. There would be dry lab, and then some would be lecture rooms.
How many kids? Sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I was just going to say, I think at this point, we're leaving that designation as open at this point. I don't think it's actually been determined by the board. At least, I don't recall us making a decision at this point that it's going to be a science. I know we threw that out as one of the possibilities, but I wasn't aware that we actually made that decision yet. So I think on the report, so we should leave that open until we finish the further investigation on what's the best use of those areas in the rest of the school and how other programs are affected, and not just earmark it as science section, but leave it open until we finish those discussions and make that determination. So that would be my recommendation. I don't, I think it's a little premature to say it's a specific classrooms or a certain area or section of the schools going in there.
Okay, any further discussion?
How many kids do we have in the high school right now, John?
Right about 1,100. And it bounces either side of that 1,100. Future projections are about 1,060 down the road, but generally, we see a higher number of that coming in every year.
So that's my concern with this whole thing now, after I've thought about it the last month, is are we still understaffed at the high school? As far as teachers and other?
We were short this year a math teacher. I'm trying to think of the positions now in my head.
We were short one Spanish teacher, but some of the EL teachers had that licensure as well, so they were able to step in, at least offer some of those Spanish courses. And then I think ELA was one that, to start, was short, but we also had other individuals that had that license, so they were able to fill that, and then eventually they hired someone on an out-of-field placement, but they should be licensed by next year.
So I would tell you right now, based on the staffing that's there or what we have, we should be appropriate for that 1,100 student body, and we have roughly six teachers that are moving on carts on a daily basis.
So then, at what point do we decide what we're going to designate them classrooms as?
Well, I think that becomes part of the conversation as we begin to develop the overall plan. I mean, there's a roughed-out plan, we know we need to address the kitchen, we know we need to address the cafeteria, but that's part of the discussion Mr. Hastings has to have with the staff, and then we start to move, where's the best location? So sometime in the next month and a half, we need to kind of finalize that. Right now, I'd say, based on where it is, the plan was presented as science, and that's what is there, but it, the review and comment leaves it open enough that we can change direction if we need to.
Aaron?
Mr. Landgard, I noticed that on Page 2, there's a referendum date of August 6, and then on Page 8, there's the referendum date of August 13.
It's the 13th, yeah.
Okay, so then that could, Page 2 should be updated, then. On Page 15, I believe that's the page that you were referencing about the tax impact of the bonds, and I think the figures you mentioned regarding the, how the facility maintenance bond impacts the ag tax impact is really important, and I'm wondering if that, that impact of the facility maintenance bond is included in this packet at all?
The facility maintenance bond is, is not a voted-on piece, that's your authority, so it's not part of the review and comment.
Okay, okay, because it's, I think it's, it's helpful for people to see the big picture, but I understand that that's not.
What MDE addresses is the voter-approved piece. They'll want to know how we are going to fund everything, so I can ask that question if it needs to be in there or not, but I don't believe it does.
Okay. Well, perhaps rather than the question being whether it needs to be in there, can it be in there? Because it would show the true impact for the ag landowners being lower than what is indicated on Page 15.
Yeah, I'll ask the question. I actually called them and said they needed to make a few changes, and I figured there'd be a couple other ones, such as wrong date, so.
And this doesn't use all our facilities and maintenance dollars? We still have dollars available for the other parts of the district that we need.
Yeah, this covers about half of the authority.
One other thing on Page 2, in the highlighted portion of what this would, which components this would cover, I didn't see anything mentioning improvements to like the old second-story part of the building, where be new windows or, I don't know, just updates? That I think is included in the budget, so you may want to consider just adding a bullet point there.
Yes, and it's in the budget, so.
Are you talking the, like the exterior as well? Some of the paneling and windows?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's included there was the metal panels along with windows, along with redoing the ventilation along that outside wall.
Yeah, I mean, maybe just framing it as like energy efficiency or something like that, if that's helpful.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, or don't we? No motion, okay.
Make a motion to approve the, or support the proposal for review and comment.
Okay, motion by Steve.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Lori to approve the review and comment for the high school building project. It's up for consideration, exactly what's going to be in it yet, or how we're going to design it, but it's a step in the process. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.7. Discussion Approval of a Community Garden Collaboration.
So at the Instructional Committee, Letitia Rodriguez, Sandy Alberg, and Jose Obama were there to present an idea to offer a community garden, and they had looked at being out by the community ed building, and Mr. Webloom brought up having it potentially located at the West, Old West Learning Center site. So I think we can find a site if it's something the board is willing to work with. It's 10 families, about 200 square feet that they would have a garden space. If you want to put any restrictions on that, that would be good tonight if you're looking at, such as it must be fenced and signed, and of course, we will require liability insurance no matter what as part of that, but, excuse me. The Instructional Committee seemed in favor of moving that forward and allowing it to them to try that out. There used to be community gardens here 20 years ago on the Minnesota West grounds, and that was a little different approach. It was kind of an open community garden approach. This is more family-centered and direct family involvement and use, so that's what's being promoted by this project through the University of Minnesota Extension.
This was, went to the operations?
Instruction.
And they recommended it?
We thought it would be a good idea just to entertain the idea for now, to see what the rest of the board members would say. to see what the rest of the board members would say. We did talk about it having to be fenced, and we did talk about water and how to get water there, and they have dollars and grant dollars to get this going. What else should they say?
Something about no sale of the material, the growth material at farmers' market, not used as a, as a money raiser for the farmers' market?
No, it would not be something they can take and sell.
Yeah.
There's the potential of donations to the food pantry, at the manna food pantry, which is very close by to the West site, and potential expansion to help supply fresh produce to that facilitator in the summer, if it continued to be successful.
Was there any talk of how long this, if we did move ahead with something, a time period?
We did not talk about a time period.
Well, there was talk about expansion in more years with more families. It might have to be expanded to more, that was talked about.
My inclination would be, if we're going to go ahead with it, we should put it in a location that was least likely to be impacted in the near future, near as in maybe five to 10 years. You know, that's why West maybe isn't my first choice, because if we did something with that property in the, in the not-too-distant future, then they'd have to uproot and go someplace else. If we're gonna move ahead, it'd be nice to find something that would support a longer-term location, and also, as Tom mentioned, the potential for growth. If it worked out well, and there was gonna be more, we could add, it'd be in a location where they could sustain that, and not end up being uprooted for other purposes sometime in the not-too-distant future. So, I certainly like to, would like to work with them, but if we're gonna pick a place, look more to the long term, instead of just like a one or two-year and see how it goes type thing.
Mr. Chairman, the West location advantage is proximity to families being able to walk, and easier to reach that facility than having to drive, or the, our west of-town property is not as conducive for families being able to walk. I think there's placement on the north side of the property and existing green space that could be enough expansion space, and it's already grass that would still give us, I would think, a lot of space to the south, potentially.
We talked a little about that. We weren't sure, when, we had some brief discussion with the operations committee, where the people are located, who would be doing it. If they're on the east side of town, most likely, they're gonna drive there anyway. I mean, if they're located in that neighborhood of the, of the community, it might be a walking distance type thing, but you get beyond Homestead Avenue or further away, and most likely, they're gonna drive over and drive back. So, going a little bit further might not be that big of an issue. At least, that's what part of my thought was, too. I guess, big point is, is it something we wanna be involved in? I would say, regardless of how we decide for location, I think it's a good program for us to try and support.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a community garden collaboration.
I'll second that.
A motion by Matt, and a second by Steve, to approve the community garden collaboration. This is the city, and the county has to say in this matter, do?
No.
They don't?
No. Just us?
Just us.
Yep.
Okay, so then, we'll have further discussion as to the best site for this, or?
We'll just find them a site, probably. We'll work with them.
So, are we gonna put on their, what kind of liability are they gonna cover? And regulations on what kind of fence are we gonna build?
So, realistically, what we do is, when we rent out, even if people aren't paying rent, we ask for a liability policy, and that's pretty standard in our rental or use of our property. So, that would be required, they shouldn't have a problem with that. As far as the fencing-type approach, depending on the location, one, we don't want any permanent-type fencing, but it needs to be something decent, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, saying probably saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, let's see, that's off the regular business?
Uh, nope.
Well, we got five point eight. We got five point eight, the?
Resolution.
Resolution.
So, the resolution that is being presented, was not presented to the instructional operational, it actually, the resolution came today, and we put it together. We are in a partnership with the city in relationship to Studio Three. It is funded through cable fees, it's called peg fees, and those fees are basically paid to the cable company and passed through to the city from users of cable TV. So, with that, the users are down from where they used to be in the past, but really, what it comes to is, a lot of cable companies or providers are moving to a streaming approach or internet approach, and that's not covered under the current cable agreements around the state. And so, the legislature is actually taking up this action to look at that. It hasn't been updated for years and years and years. And so, this resolution would be in support of new legislation to allow collection for those type of streaming services or things that are being taken over by, from cable television to a streaming-type service. So, I've been involved with Studio Three or Cable Three for, since I walked in the door, and it's been one of those organizations that we collaborated with, the college and the city for all those years, and we received pretty good funding, and the funding has now dropped, and does continue to drop based on those that are using cable companies versus, example, a direct TV or a streaming-type service. Studio Three has changed and rebranded over the years, and actually, at this point, is doing a number of fantastic things. It's starting to actually come to the vision that a lot of people have had for years, and very appreciative of where they're headed. So, I personally, as would, being on that board, and also part of the school district, would recommend that you approve the resolution in support of the legislature addressing this.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution in support of the funding and legislation to re-renize the funding for the, for the cable TV.
Motion by Steve?
Second.
Second by Matt, to approve the resolution as written. This is, goes to the legislature?
Yeah.
And you expect action on it this year?
Never know, with the legislature.
So, if there's no action, what happens?
It'll, it'll come back, and it'll get addressed again, but...
Any further, Steve?
I just wanted, you know, one of the things that wasn't touched upon by John was also, when this was first set up, this was a fee that the cable companies were paying in lieu of other types of fees that, that were, were gonna get charged for using the public right-of-way to run these cables, particularly in the communities where these are located. So, by them not, you know, not using cable TV and going to streaming through internet services and running cables through the internet service and stuff, they're getting away from having to pay any of those fees, which help support the local community and their communication with their citizens. And that was, part of the big thing with this, was that that provided some source of, of, of cost to the cable company for the use, or user fee for the use of the public's right-of-ways for their business. So, anyway, that, that was kinda how this was also sold at the time. And now that we're getting down the road, you know, 21 or 30 whatever years now, it's kinda coming to the point where, where that revenue is no longer there, although the cities and stuff have all of the problems with, with working around and the extra cost of doing their, their construction and maintenance work because of all those utilities in the right-of-way. So, I think it's only fair that, that some type of compensation keep coming for that reason alone, but also because the communities that have this in place, it's, it's a way for them to keep their citizens improved, informed, and promote their community. Also, I think you should note on the map, those are the members of this organization. There are a lot of other organizations in the state that have local cable TV and get funding from this also, they're just not a member of this. So, if it looks like there's not a lot of people involved, it's actually a lot larger number than what it shows on that map. It's just that these are the members of that organization, the others will get the benefit from having this also. So, it's not, this isn't just a small amount of rural areas, a larger number of rural areas, small communities that don't take the time or don't have the financing to be members of this organization. So, it's more involved than just what you see on that map.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a, is this a roll call vote?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The resolution passes. Okay, this will be it for the five point eight. We'll go on to reports, or superintendent's report, John?
Just have a couple things. One, I gave you a sheet that MSBA put together on the K-12 appropriations from last go-around, and if you look on the very front part, the discretionary dollars for the 24 and 25-year, school years increased 6%, while categoricals increased 35. The grant opportunities, or those grants, increased 167%, and then non-K-12 revenue went up 108%. If you look at the outer ring of the circle, it will show you the discretionary dollars for 24 and 25, and you will see that actually, the discretionary dollars aren't necessarily keeping up, and those are generally salaries and those type of expenditures. Categoricals, we do use some of those for salaries such as compensatory ed, but they, that's where a lot of the money in the last legislative session went. So, just, it's a good little diagram and graph, and if you turn to the backside, you'll see those dollars broken out in a bar graph. And it's just good information, because even though schools did receive more money, it wasn't necessarily in a helpful area. So, just wanna make sure you're aware of that, so address that. Along with that, in other legislation, there's a lot of different legislation. They're starting to hit committee deadlines. Not necessarily helpful legislation, and increased costs, potentially with some of that that's coming out. So, you are going to wanna pay attention to the legislation that's out there. With that, I'm gonna address daycare, just in the fact that some perceptions on daycare, just so you know, our four-year-old program that we started new this year, we have 106 slots, or 108 total slots, 106 students that are participating in all-day, every-day, which is the four-year-old students. And it's actually full for next year already. Family literacy, which is a half-day, three days a week, and there's 12 students enrolled with a capacity of 16. And then, the three-year-old program is a three-day-a-week program, so it's half-days. We have a capacity of 48 students with 45 participating. As far as the all-day preschool, about 60% of that, we, based on our funds that we get, which provided when we had half-day program, covered those costs. So, the additional 40% are dollars that you chose to take out of the general fund. So, those dollars, we're not receiving any state funding, even though that's what was presented in the article in the Globe. So, again, I just, we don't have all-day three-year-old programs. There is a neighboring school that is actually allowing some three-year-olds in the all-day program. And also, if I understand right, one of the private schools intends to start a preschool program, all-day program. Whether they will or not, I, I don't have that information. It's easy to point at District 518, because we are the larger district, but Round Lake Brewster, for example, has been running an all-day four-year-old program for at least five to six years prior to us. So, again, it's easy to point at District 518, but it's not District 518. We're maybe playing a part in some of those kids, parents choosing to send their kids to us versus a private daycare, or nonprofit daycare, but I wanna be clear, it's, one, we're not getting total funding for this, and two, it's not just our programming that might have an effect on daycare. The last one is, we will be looking to do intermediate AP interviews, and Mr. Van Breezen will be looking for a couple of school board members to participate. I believe he's shooting for that first week in April. So, if you are interested, I would appreciate you sending the name, so I can pass it on to him, if you can make it work. And I believe it was Wednesday, April 3rd, he was looking at. So, if you have a free calendar day, it would be good to let me know right away. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any questions for John?
Chairman, a question, John, if you could share again that all-day preschool number that you said?
So, we, so the all-day four-year-old program, four-year-old preschool, we have a capacity of 108, and we have 106 students participating. And that's what it'll be for next year.
It was 48 in the three-year-old?
Pardon me?
Three-year-old group was 48?
Yes, three-year-old is 48 total capacity, 45 participating.
Thank you.
And that's a three-day-a-week program, three-day half-days.
Okay, any further questions for John? Hearing none, we'll go on to the instructional committee report.
Everything's been covered for the instructional report. Under other reports, however, the Krailsheim Committee did meet and had their annual banquet, and I'd like to announce that Melanie Sirda is gonna be our next Krailsheim student for the next school year. And in Krailsheim, they've also held their banquet, and the student coming back to us for next year is Lily Gabert. So, congratulations to those two young ladies, and the continuation of the exchange program.
Okay, thank you Lori. Operations Committee?
I think everything has been covered.
Okay. Any other reports?
I would just like to mention that Mr. Hastings mentioned today, at one of our administrative meetings, that he has sent information out to the student body about a student school board rep, and encouraged counselors and teachers to try to promote it. He is not getting really any interest at this point in time. I know there was some discussion from some board about the potential of maybe coming into the high school and just try to talk students.
into the high school and just trying to talk to students, so if any of you are interested in doing that, um, I would encourage you, maybe just reach out to Mr. Hastings, and, uh, really just try to promote with students, uh, really what, um, they'd be getting into, the importance of having some of them on, on the committee here, um, understandably in the spring. I think a lot of students just aren't really paying attention to that, so it might be good to promote it.
Any other business, any future business? No more sessions scheduled yet? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the meeting adjourned.